I'm going to call to order this February twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty-two meeting of the Capitola City Council. Welcome to all our attendees and of course council members and staff. And I think Chloe, you want to start us off with an announcement?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor Story. Welcome to the Capitola City Council meeting, everyone. In accordance with California Senate Bill three sixty-one, this meeting is not physically open to the public. Council and staff are meeting via Zoom, and there are several ways for the public to watch and participate. Information on how to join the meeting using the Zoom application or just a landline or mobile phone, along with how to submit public comment during the meeting tonight, is available on our website, cityofcapitola.org, and on the published meeting agenda. The public can also livestream the meeting on our website and on YouTube. As always, the meeting is also cablecast live on Charter Communications Cable TV Channel Eight, and is being recorded to be rebroadcast on the following Wednesday at eight AM and on Saturday, following the first rebroadcast at one PM on Charter Channel seventy-one and Comcast Channel twenty-five. And our technician this evening is Walter. Thank you, Walter. Thank you, Mayor Story.
Yeah, thank you, Chloe. And also thank you, Walter, for being my technician this evening. And now let's have a roll call of council members.
Yes. Councilmember Bertrand.
Present.
Councilmember Brooks.
Here.
Councilmember Peterson.
Present.
Vice Mayor Kaiser.
Here.
Mayor Story.
Here. And at this time, I'm gonna ask Councilmember Peterson if she would lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I'd be happy to. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda this evening?
Staff has no changes to the agenda this evening.
Let's then proceed to presentations. We have two presentations tonight. Each will be limited to eight minutes unless they're very interesting. And so let's begin with item A, which is an overview of the Green Waste Organics Program.
Thank you, Mayor Story, council members. I'm not giving the presentation, but I would like to introduce Emily Hanson for Green Waste Recovery. Emily, you can let them know who you are and everything, and I appreciate it. So, thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, Larry, and members of the council. My name is Emily Hanson, and I'm with Green Waste Recovery. Also on the line is Jim Maresco, who's the general manager of our operation that services the city of Capitola. And I know that there's been a lot of excitement and chatter about our new food waste program where residents and businesses are able to put material out for collection on the residential side. That's in their normal green cart. So prior to January first, it was strictly a clean, green yard trimmings container. And starting on January first, residents are able to put in food scraps. And there are a few limitations on that, but ultimately we've had really good feedback from residents and businesses in City of Capitola, and really just a lot of interest generated about the program. We do have a lot of commercial food waste customers as well. And so while they've enjoyed the ability for quite some time to be able to put food waste into their food scraps containers, they now also have the ability, if they so choose, to put yard trimmings in those containers as well. One of the critical pieces to being able to offer this was having the processing capacity. So as I'm sure you're aware, and as part of the discussion that we had when we brought the restated amended agreement for your consideration in the fall, was that the state of California passed SB thirteen eighty-three. And that's a statewide law looking at reducing the short-lived climate pollutants, a large portion of which come from burying organic waste, predominantly food scrap-type waste in landfills. One of the greatest challenges to statewide implementation is the lack of facilities. And we are fortunate that we have not only the Monterey Regional Waste Management District, who committed capacity to green waste and to the city of Capitola to be able to process those mixed organics. But we also had a backup plan that we were able to offer back to the city, which was, in the event that the Monterey Regional Waste Management District wasn't able to take those materials, Green Waste family of company owns and operates the Z Best composting facility in Gilroy. So we were pleased to be able to offer this program to you guys and really offer a program that a lot of jurisdictions in the state of California wish that they could offer, but they don't have the processing capacity or the facilities to be able to offer these programs. So as part of that amended and restated agreement, we've expanded the materials that all of the residents and businesses can put into the containers. And as part of what we call the base services for residents, they subscribe to garbage service. They get their recycling cart for no additional charge, and then also their green organic materials cart for no additional charge. On the commercial side and for multifamily-type dwellings, I know that mobile home parks are a hot topic, so we can talk about those. But a lot of the mobile home parks as well participate in our programs as if they were multifamily-type dwellings, and that's where we have a lot of centralized service. So the mobile home parks have, some of them already receive bin service, some of them have individual carts. So we've been doing some technical assistance and outreach to make sure that the mobile home park owners and the residents know what options are available to them. And we do have a couple of topics that we'll touch on in a minute, just to be able to address the mobile home parks in particular. On the residential side, one of the things that the amended and restated agreement also incorporated was the provision by Green Waste to the single-family residential homes at no additional charge, food waste pails. And we did have an initial backlog due to supply chain issues, so we had a lot of interest very early in January. We put folks that were interested on the list and let them know that as soon as we received those pails, those kitchen pails, that we would prioritize them for delivery. And we are happy to report that all of the requests that have come in, all of those food waste pails have been delivered to the customers that have requested those pails. And as of the day before yesterday, we had delivered a hundred and twenty-one pails to single-family residential customers in the city of Capitola. On the MFD and really that kind of unique mobile home park setting, we know that there has also been discussion about how to overcome some of the centralized location challenges. And obviously, we have some spatial constraints at the mobile home parks. And as part of our franchise agreement, the way that it was negotiated and written, that customers that are individually subscribing to garbage service receive that recyclables bin that is a sixty-four gallon container and then also a sixty-four gallon organics cart as part of that base service. We have received feedback from customers, some of the single-family type homes, but really mostly from the mobile home park type settings, where the sixty-four gallon container is larger than they're comfortable with. So some of those mobile home units have currently a garbage cart and a recycling cart. And even though they are eligible to receive that sixty-four gallon green organics cart at no additional charge due to spatial constraints, and also in some cases where they have a landscaper that already off-hauls their landscape materials, historically, they haven't had a need at their mobile home unit to have that third green cart. Now that we've rolled out the food scraps program, there's a lot of excitement to participate in a program, but those sixty-four gallon carts are somewhat cumbersome. When we rolled out the program, the cost and the rates that we put in place included the capital for each single-family resident mobile home park unit to have that sixty-four gallon green container. So we've already purchased and received that capital. But I did talk with Jim Maresco, our general manager, and we want to work with and alongside the city that if there is a specific request that the city would like for us to offer a thirty-two gallon green cart, Jim Maresco and I talked about some options where we could really minimize the cost to the ratepayers that are interested in that program and offer it for really a nominal per month charge for those smaller carts. So we have a lot of options. We wanted to hear back from the council if you had some questions or suggestions. And then we can definitely work with Larry offline, either to just go ahead and proceed with an arrangement to be able to offer those smaller carts in that mobile home setting, or we could definitely bring something back to the council if that would be your pleasure. I think that generally concludes my summary, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you will have.
I'll take myself off mute. Thank you, Emily, for the update on the organics program. And I also want to thank Jim for being on the line with us this evening. Do council members have questions? I see Councilmember Bertrand has his hand up. Go ahead, Councilmember Bertrand.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And I remembered to take myself off mute. Something's working. So anyway, so in terms of the extra volume, it's really a matter of ability to process, correct? For organic recycling.
Yeah, that's a great question. I'll take it in two parts. It's not a volume issue per se. So the food waste, for folks participating, that food waste was already going in the garbage. And generally, we see about a three to five percent increase in volumes in the green container when food scraps are added. The issue is that from a regulatory perspective, any composting facility that is processing clean yard waste has to have a different permit from the state of California and from the local enforcement agency to be able to process green waste or yard waste that has food waste commingled with it. So fortunately, we do have, again, the district and then also ours, Z Best Composting Facility. So you guys were kind of in a real win-win situation. Not only did you not have limited capacity, you had two different facilities that were able to offer you that service. And as part of your disposal agreement with the Monterey Regional Waste Management District, they stepped up and said, hey, it would be our preference to be able to process that material for you. And so we went ahead with that arrangement. But statewide, there's an issue of general composting facilities, whether that's just the yard waste side or yard waste commingled with food waste. And so that's really the statewide constraint is the composting facilities in general. And then each composting facility has to have a different permit to process those food scraps.
Well, I've been to Z Best. It was a great tour. And I have to admit, it smells great out there. You know, the smell of composting material, you would think not, but it actually smells pretty cool, earthy smells, I recall. And I've asked several times to get a tour of the new facility down south, the one that you mostly go to. But I was told last time that COVID prevented that. And, you know, I would still love to go on a tour. And, you know, if that could be jotted down, maybe you could make that available to us on the city council. I'm pretty sure, I've seen some videos and stuff, I'm pretty sure everyone would find it interesting. So just something I'd love to do. And we have a committee here that Larry runs that's dealing with recycling, so I'm on that. So that's also my interest.
Okay, thank you, then. Thank you, Councilmember Bertrand. And Councilmember Brooks?
Thank you, Mayor Story. Emily, thank you for the presentation. So you mentioned the issue at the mobile home parks. Are you, has it been, have you been notified or have you heard about HOAs also having the same issue?
That's a great question. We haven't, that issue has not come up yet in terms of HOAs and managing the service. It really has been, we individually have been working with the mobile home parks because we've been contacted by the mobile home parks. And then we also know that there have been some communications between at least one of the mobile home parks and the city. So we've been working with that mobile home park as well. So today, what we've been doing is really, because we have so many changes going on at once, when requests come in for that technical assistance, we're prioritizing those. But as part of our amended and restated agreement with the city, we've also dedicated a halftime outreach coordinator who's able to go out and actually do that one-on-one technical assistance. So if we have requests that come in from the HOAs or really any of the individual units that are covered under the HOA, we now have more bandwidth to be able to provide that really customized support.
Yeah, that'd be great. My thought is that it might be a challenge to find, go to each HOA, but better yet, to go through the property management companies that oversee the HOA. The issue or the concerns you've shared with the mobile home is identical to the one that I have here in our personal HOA. And so just to reiterate what I think I heard you say is that to mediate the problem, you're offering a smaller bin to try to fit into that space, or you're just still open to exploring different options?
Another good question. So we're open to exploring, in your particular instance, we know a lot of HOAs, for example, don't like for the carts to be placed outside of the footprint of the home. And so in many instances, you're trying to squeeze two or even three containers within a very small constrained garage area. And we also know that there are some folks have expressed concerns putting that food waste that has a propensity to generate a smell inside of their garage. So we can work with your particular HOA or the property manager. We also have those options. If you have a landscaping service, for example, there may be a bin that's already, so when you think of a bin, think of a dumpster. So we have the smaller individual carts that would go per unit. And then there are also instances where we have more of kind of the townhome HOA-type setting or mobile home parks, where there's also a shared bin. So maybe everyone has their own garbage and recycling carts assigned, but they also have access to a bin that isn't in a shared community-type location. So we're willing to work with you in whatever capacity really works for your particular, you know, set of situations with spatial constraints and who's paying the bill, for example. Sometimes that bill goes to the HOA and a landscape company. Sometimes you may be paying for your individual service at your actual unit that you live. So there's always a little bit kind of a nuanced approach, which is why it was important to us to make sure to dedicate a halftime employee to be able to actually go out and do that work with you.
Great. Emily, if you could give your information or the best way for our constituents to reach out to you, if Mayor Story, if that's okay, that I ask staff to share that information with us, council members directly, that would be extremely helpful. Thank you.
Absolutely. I think that would be very helpful. And I see now Vice Mayor Kaiser?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mayor, and thanks, Emily, for the presentation. I'm definitely really excited. I've been a new composter-type person for a little while now, but excited that this is becoming more accessible for everybody. And I live in Brookville Terrace, which is a mobile home community. And I do know that we have a more of an elderly population, so I know that a lot of them are worried about having a larger can that they then are responsible for bringing to the street and things like that. So I think either like a neighborly shared can, maybe per, you know, five houses or something, especially if it's just like one to two people living in a house. I think a shared option would be great, or just a smaller one per home, I think could be helpful. We do have a large green waste dumpster type thing here as well. So I don't know, obviously, it's gonna be specific to each neighborhood, but that is something too that I think that we could explore for everybody that's here. And then I just had a couple of questions regarding the items that are eligible, because a lot of places are, a lot of restaurants and to-go type places are moving towards the compostable items for boxes and straws and things like that. So are those eligible to be put in the bins? Or is that something that needs to be done like separately?
That's a great question. So what is and is not accepted is driven by the processing facility and part of its preference, and some of it has to do with compliance with the state regulations. And so the Monterey Regional Waste Management District has definitely placed a preference to not have compostable ware actually placed into the new organics bin. And similarly, we know that there is, and I live in the county, unincorporated county area, I'm behind Dominican Hospital. And I know that on Nextdoor, there's also been a lot of chatter about compostable bags and whether folks can use compostable bags. And there's also been some communication on Nextdoor where they feel like maybe we're being a little vague at our customer call center. And there's a very, very good reason for that, which is the compostable bags are not prohibited by the Monterey Regional Waste Management District, but they discourage them. And so the messaging that when folks call us and talk to our customer call center or talk to our outreach folks, there's a little bit of this area where we're definitely discouraging that use. We're not promoting use, but we're also not prohibiting the use. So, you know, there's a lot of suggestions on Nextdoor about kind of how to mitigate, you know, any potential stickiness, for example, in the yard waste cart. We do want to remind folks that the same material has always gone into your gray container, which is your garbage container. So to the extent that you have yard trimmings, putting the yard trimmings in the bottom, for example, of the bin, and then putting the food waste in can help it from sticking to the bottom of the container. So just being mindful really about, I call it the layer cake, which is, you know, kind of drop some yard trimmings down and then put your food waste on top. And if you mix it in, then you don't get, you know, for example, coffee grounds and such stuck to the side of the container. And there's also opportunities if folks want to rinse it out and then dump that rinse water into their garden bed. So really lots of creative solutions to mitigate concerns that folks may have. But mostly, we want to make it as convenient as possible and as clear as possible.
Right. Yeah, that's great. I look forward to you guys presenting here, too. So thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Any other questions from council members? Seeing none. Thank you, Emily, for taking the time. And also Jim, again, for taking the time to be here this evening to give us this update on your organics program. And we very much value our partnership with you. So, yeah, once again, thank you, and I hope to see you again soon.
Yep, happily. And I did take note, we'll make sure to get Larry the most streamlined contact information. And then Councilmember Bertrand, we will work with Larry to see if the district is open to hosting some tours.
Great. All right. Thank you.
All right. You enjoy the rest of the meeting. Bye-bye.
So next, we'll go on to our next presentation, which is an informational presentation on the two thousand and twenty City of Capitola Local Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Good evening, Mayor Story and council. I'll be giving this presentation. Let me share my screen here. Larry, does that look okay? I'm gonna assume you can see.
Yes, that's great. Thank you.
Yeah, it looks good, Steve.
Thank you. So this is a presentation that Mayor Story, you requested on the Local Hazard Mitigation Plan. This current update was in two thousand and twenty, and I want to give a quick shout out to Kinley Horn, who's on the bottom of the slide. Many of the slides that I'm using here tonight were part of their two thousand and twenty presentation. And we're prepared for them, so I just wanted to give a shout out to them. So what is a hazard mitigation plan? Hazard mitigation plan is plans put together to try and mitigate disasters as they occur and mitigate both the cost of recovery and damage to that. So it includes a community profile, which includes, you know, where our developments are, where our, what the development trends are, what the road patterns are, kind of gets an overall look at the community profile of the community. Then it identifies hazards that are possible to hit this area. It identifies locations, extend past occurrences and probable future occurrences, potential hazards. And it does a risk assessment, which it looks at all the critical facilities on a ton of facilities, roads, first responder facilities, infrastructure such as sewer stations, sewage pump stations, water lines, things like that, water treatment plants. It's really focused on that type of infrastructure and protecting those. And then it develops, it looks at the hazard profiles, the risk assessments, the facilities, and it develops a set of mitigation actions that are recommended actions and measures that, you know, for us to take as we try and protect the city. I've highlighted it because that's what we're gonna spend a good portion tonight talking about as we go through. And then it talks about how to maintain the plan and use the plan. So a quick history on our mitigation plan. The first plan was adopted in two thousand and thirteen. We got a FEMA grant. There was a big push back then to have these mitigation plans developed, and they actually tied them to getting funding. It's not easy funding to get without the mitigate warrant. Even with the mitigation plan, it's not easy to get. But without it, you do not qualify for funding. And those fundings identified to try and help mitigate and institute much of the mitigation plans you'll see in there. The plans are good for five years from date of adoption, so we last updated this in two thousand and twenty. That update was primarily focused on the impacts of sea level rise. A lot of the other ones, earthquakes and things like that, really hadn't changed as far as their ability to impact and their severity. We did have a technical advisory committee that was formed in two thousand and thirteen, made up of local jurisdictions. I have all this coming up, and that was reestablished in two thousand and twenty. So looking at the advisory committee, obviously, we had city capital from the community development department, police department, public works department. We're all involved in both the formation of the, or the creation of the two thousand and thirteen one and the update in two thousand and twenty. External, we had central fire there from the county Santa Cruz. We had their office of emergency services, Department of Public Works, sanitation engineering, and waiter, water and wastewater operations. And we have flood control districts on five. We had PG&E there, SoCal Creek Water District, SoCal Union Elementary School. And the National Weather Service and USGS were also there and provided a lot of information for us. So looking quickly at the types of hazards that were profiled, we have coastal bluff and erosion. And you can see what we do is we went through and gave it a probability, affected areas, impact, secondary impacts, and a total score. And this was, everybody went through and kind of rated it on a scale. And so these ratings, total scores, kind of identify the significant and the less significant hazards that people felt were appropriate to the city of Capitola. So you can see there's three significant ones that were identified. One is the earthquake. Obviously, for those of us who are around in Loma Prieta, earthquake, significant damage occurred in much of the county. I wasn't with Capitola at that time, but I don't think there was significant damage in Capitola. But certainly, another earthquake of that magnitude could result in significant damage here. The other one is floods. I think we've all seen lots of pictures of floods. We kind of lived through one in two thousand and eleven. So that is a significant event that could happen. And then in the two thousand and twenty upper update, we identified sea level rise as significant. That's something that's coming quickly. We see effects of it in the weather we have today and the, you know, the amount of times we're breaching the seawall. We're certainly planning for it with the new wharf project. We're making steps with that to try and make sure we address sea level rise. And there's a lot of planning and effort going forth in that. So this is a map that shows all the identified critical facilities. I'm not gonna read them all. I'll mention a few. We have city halls on here, central fire stations obviously on here, Jade Street, New Brighton, our evacuation centers, the bridge, Stockton Avenue Bridge, Park Avenue and Cliff Drive are also key facilities, because those are allowing people to evacuate and move across town in a disaster as needed. There are several others on there, sewage pump stations, water treatment plants. If you go through the document itself, there's a section. If you go through the the document itself, there's a section kind of goes through and ranks each facility, each category, each risk assessment. And these were the the facilities that were ranked the most at risk. Stockton Avenue Bridge. Because it can be affected by floods from the river, it can be affected from the sea. Liqufaction underneath the the bridge, it is, and obviously tsunami. So it's it's a very at-risk facility. Capitol Pump Station, sewage pump station, that's one on Park is very exposed. Cliff Drive, which I mentioned is an access and emergency access route. Noble Gold Pipe just is identified as a key facility just because as we've learned in 2011, when it fails, it's it's not good. So that's a key structure. Park Avenue, for the same reason, Cliff Drive is identified. Park Avenue is probably not as greater risk because it's a greater distance from the cliff to the road face. But in a significant event like an earthquake or something, it's possible we could lose a significant portion of that buff bluff there and it would be exposed. And then the SoCal Pump Station, which is in the Knott Hill Shopping Center, is also identified because it's in the flood zone. So now I'm going to kind of step back and go through the hazard mitigation actions that were developed. This was included, it's an attachment on the agenda to the item report. And I'm going to try and go through these quickly, but I don't want to skip anything. And certainly, if there's anything you want me to stop and talk about more, please let me know. So the first item here is earthquake and liquefaction. And let me kind of step back. What I'm going to do is I'm going to highlight each of the actions. I'm not going to talk about each mitigation action. I'm going to talk about the ones that are a priority high or medium and then sit really focus on the ones that have budget impacts that we may want to discuss as part of our upcoming budget session next week. So earthquake and liquefaction, mostly what we're trying to do with earthquakes is make sure we're building everything to current codes, which the building department, planning department are very good at. And we're kind of keeping track of, you know, all the notifications we can get and latest information, but on a ongoing, you know, we need to do this by this date. Earthquake is more just making sure we're we're building things to code. The next item is storm and flooding hazards. This is obviously one of the largest ones we have. And so the yellow highlights here are high priority, but probably not as much of a budget issue. So we have evaluate likelihood, oh, this one. Evaluate likelihood of debris flow and impacts on Stockton Bridge. Reason that's yellow and not green is because we've actually completed that item. That's a report that we've completed that identifies both the risks of the existing Stockton Avenue Bridge and the way it's situated in the creek and also some items we could do to implement to try and mitigate those from replacing the bridge to other items to try and reflect debris as it come down the creek. Improve the noble gold storm grain, like that's a little obvious. It's very high just because of the, we know what happens when it when it breaks. But it's also very expensive. I, as I sit here today, I I'm not positive what the answer is to resolve that problem. But that's something that's identified. The next item is to reevaluate critical facilities, relocate critical facilities such as the city hall, police stations in the floodplain upstairs where I am right now is out of the floodplain, but to relocate those above the hundred year flood protection. Again, that's a rather high cost item to relocate these facilities. But it's something we probably should be keeping, keep thinking of as we move forward. And then these other two items continue to implement the SoCal Creek Management Plan. The reason that was identified was it it really keeps us in tune with the creek. And by maintaining the flume and and other items, we're doing our best to try and mitigate any floods that come down there. And then participate in the storm ready program, which we do just to be aware and make sure we know notifications out. But those aren't really budget items. I mean, SoCal Creek has a budget items, but it's been ongoing for many years. Continues on on this item, there's many items to do for flooding and and that. It also includes, when we did the 2020 update, as you can see, it says new over here, these are all items that were added in the 2020 update that weren't there prior. So again, investigate various opportunities for beach nourishment and sand replenishment to do as part of our beach groin project. So we've actually kind of completed that. We did do an analysis of, you know, is there any other ways to nourish the beach short of rebuilding the groin? We didn't find any. We think the groin is the best way to keep the beach in front of the esmonade, at least in place and intact. And we've gone forward and completed that. The next item is probably what I think is the next step we need to do as we go through this is prepare a coastal bluff and beach management plan that outlines short and long-term goals for bluff protection and sand mitigation strategies that will help us deal with both sea level rise and storms. So it's it's a twofold issue and same time it'll help with tsunamis. So I think, you know, there's a lot of discussion on different ways to mitigate this. I know the coastal commission is very interested in us finding what they call natural solutions. I'm not sure they would work here. I know that was an issue when we we did do the the jetty. They want us to look at it and was determined they weren't available. But I think this is a rather detailed analysis that would start, you know, in the city's western boundary and go to the eastern boundary. And look what it's take to protect Park Park Cliff Drive, excuse me, the village itself. And then Grand Avenue and Park Avenue as we go through. Those are all things we probably want to protect and we need to figure out what the best steps for those are. There's a lot of solutions out there. I don't think any of them are inexpensive, but doing this study would be a place to kick that off.
I have a question.
Sure.
Yeah, thank you, Steve. So you mentioned the jetty and I was just wondering if you could expand on that. Does, you know, we capture sand and stuff like that, does that help protect the beach? It's not enough. And I think there's evidence of a second jetty, you know, as you go towards New Brighton. And, you know, I haven't heard that addressed. So I was just wondering if you could talk about that a little bit.
So the second jetty was, it's not a permitted jetty. Heard of the coastal commission where the the first jetty is that we were able to rebuild. So they weren't really interested in talking about. There will have been a whole nother permitting process to get that recognized as a jetty. I believe it came from, it's a remnant from when there was a sewage treatment plant and outfall in that area.
Right, right.
And it's it's gone in disarray. Actually, I think it's too close, but I could be wrong to the first jetty to actually provide that protection. I could see a series of those along, you know, below Grand Avenue and Long Beach there. But I think that's probably a little too close, but that's why it wasn't addressed as part of that.
Okay, and now, I don't know if this is off subject, but now that the first jetty is complete, have we been monitoring sand accretion and noticed any difference in the beach that's below the buff bluff?
We don't have any studies that go out and we haven't measured it. And notably, I certainly think that the beach east of the jetty hasn't changed much. I mean, I've I walk it at low tides and it seems as big as it was before we did the jetty project. And that's what our studies that we did to get the permits for the jetty reconstruction showed is the sand builds up to the end of the jetty and then whatever keeps coming goes around it and it continues to do that today at the same amounts that it did before. So it shouldn't have had any impacts below that.
Okay, that that's that's why I brought up the second jetty, permitted or not. And I thought maybe that would add to that effect. Thank you.
So moving forward, we have the the number five here, consider resiliency improvements to protect and maintain critical vehicle in non-vehicle coastal access. So that is maintaining the roads, as I keep mentioning, and the bridges. And that's kind of a high, medium priority. Actually, protecting him is a high priority. So as we go for that. And that's just making sure our policies and codes and all that are consistent with minimizing risk and we're not building things back in the floodplain or at least not critical facilities. As I said, it continues on through Z and all these are low priority. But if you have to talk about them, just let me know. Drought hazards, obviously, we're in a drought now. The work item here is to coordinate with our water companies, so City of Santa Cruz and SoCal Creek Water. We do that, we're adopting ordinances as they require regarding retrofit. We have retrofit ordinances, our landscaping ordinances are done in coordination with the water statistics. So I I feel like we're meeting that and it is ongoing. It's not, it's not a ton of work or expense. There's other issues here. Windstorm hazards, probably not something we'll see too often and we don't get hurricanes thing. Thought and so this is identified, there's some items here just coordinating with other facilities and making sure we're aware of them and those are all low priorities. Coastal erosion, bluff erosion, we kind of talked about this, it is very related to the flooding issues. It's a a medium priority for us to just identify and work with local agencies to preserve the coastline as best we can. This really is is coordinating both, as I mentioned, the report we probably should try and work on is identifying solutions. And then start working, negotiating with the coastal commission to see what they're going to permit us to do. Tsunami hazards, and I know Mayor Story, this is, I think, what spurred putting this report on. Certainly, when 2013 was two years after we had had the first tsunami and then we had another one not too long ago. Luckily, in the 2011 tsunami, it was a low tide, we had no real impacts here, although the yacht harbor did. And this year, we did have some overwashing through the openings of the sea wall. I don't think it topped, it may have, but if it topped, it was a minor. Most of the debris I saw was related to the openings in the sea wall. I think the issues that we've addressed for dealing with coastal storms and sea level rise will also help us address the tsunami hazard issues. So what's identified here is more of being prepared, knowing what the tsunami ready program is, we were a member of that. The police department receives the notifications and we know what they did. We we were able to, you know, evaluate on our own if they don't have an evaluation with the tsunami warning, but usually they do. The impacts that we can take. And that's where we're talking about, we've we've talked about internally getting together a staff so as we get a warning, determine what we estimate those impacts are. And that's looking at size of the incoming wave and the and the tides that we predict or winds. The other one is maintaining public communication systems to warn the public. Initially, this had sirens in it. We looked at a siren, I think it was even prior to the 2013 LHMP. And while sirens work good if you have a very short period of warning for a tsunami, like they may in in the islands, Tonga, for example, they probably hopefully had some sirens to warn people. In here, when our typical, almost 90% or 95% of tsunamis we're going to get are going to be ones that are coming in eight, 10, 12 or longer hours. So we have plenty of time to communicate with the residents, communicate with those properties that we think were impacted. And I think working with the police department, we really decided the best way to deal with those long range tsunamis is not a siren, but it's hand to hand or walking, walking the neighborhoods and knocking on doors and making sure people are aware of what's going on. Police department does have NICSOL and other social media ways to communicate with people. And I think that's still the best way for for us to continue working forward on the tsunami notifications. See what else. We have hazardous materials. So that's mainly related to highways and rail systems where hazardous materials are transported and how you deal with spills there. Again, it's more of a coordination effort with the agencies that are actually overseeing those, both the the transportation and any hazardous material spills. And we continue to do those monitorings. Fire-related actions, a lot of the fire-related actions are related to, you know, the firestorms we've seen are for the more rural areas where we where they have to get the separation from a building. There aren't a lot of, there are no high ranking or medium rank priority items in fire separations. Again, this coordination with our local tourist fire department there. Landside and mud flow, we have a a potential of having a problem in the creek. It's kind of a low priority right now just because of the unlikely hood of it actually occurring. And if it does, we would, you know, we know how to respond. And then a multi-hazard is, again, it's a medium priority and it's coordinating with the the emergency services and cities and other agencies in the city. We do that on a regular basis. Police department's kind of our lead in coordinating with all those agencies. And certainly in the public works, we we coordinate when we need to need help. And I think those are all of our hazard mitigation actions. And that completes my report. I'd be happy to answer any questions I can.
Council members have questions? Councilmember Bertrand, is your hand still up or do you have another question? You're on, you're on mute, Councilmember Bertrand.
Change. Is paint discharge and chemicals that are used in household, you know, like cleaning substances and stuff like that, is that considered a hazard on this level?
No, that's more, like I said, the hazard is where we're impacting probably the roadways and the ability to respond and so roads get closed, rails get closed or people are directly threatened by, you know, some kind of chemical spill. It's not the the pollutant discharge into the sewer system or into the storm grain system.
Okay, thanks for that clarification.
Okay, thank you, Steve. I had a question concerning the, oh, excuse me, Councilmember Peterson. Let's see your hand, is that?
Thank you, Mayor Story. You had mentioned, Steve, some coordination with our water district. And I had spoken recently with Ron Duncan from the SoCal Creek Water District. And one of the things that I speak with him about when we do touch base is the saltwater intrusion issue into our drinking water wells. And so I'm wondering if that's considered kind of a hazard in this regard? Is that something that would relate to sea level rise or to drought? Is that something that is mostly the water district's issue to deal with and we just coordinate with them? Or is there really any interaction on our part with them in this regard?
I'm kind of flipping through the policy. I know I took it down. I don't see anything related in this that we identified saltwater intrusion into the aquifer. We, I mean, as we know, SoCal Creek is is actively building pure water SoCal to dry and address that issue. We're certainly coordinating with them. But I don't see anything in a quick scan here, and I don't remember reading anything in this report that identifies it. And I think that's because it's mainly a water district issue to deal with and we coordinate with them on that.
Makes sense. Thank you.
My understanding that the Pure Water Project, one of the intended objectives is to recharge the aquifers to counteract that saltwater intrusion. So that I I'd assume that the Pure Water Project was meant to address that issue.
Yeah, that's the single, I think, primary purpose of the Pure Water SoCal Project.
Steve, on the noble gold stormwater facility, I just noticed, you know, it it's listed as a high priority and for good reason because of the 2011 floods that came from there. And it has a deadline of 2025. And I did recognize you mentioned that it would be a high cost item. But is there an approach to addressing that particular objective? Assessing, you know, the cost and either starting to make plans to set aside funding or to extend the deadline or revise it in some way?
So not deadline, it's a target completion date. So it's a little different. I mean, we set these dates and and, you know, there's nothing holding to them. When we update them, we're trying to update the dates in here. Regarding the actual project, you know, if the council wants it, you establish our priorities. I think the next step and the first step in trying to do that is is to do some kind of study that identifies what our options are and what the I think the next step and the first step in trying to do that is, is to do some kind of study that identifies what our options are and what those costs are. Very difficult project could involve purchasing private properties. So I think that would be the first step and it'd be, you know. I would be the first to promote the idea of taking that step and beginning the process. Certainly expensive, but if we know what we want to do, then we can start looking for grants and figuring out how we're going to fund it.
Right, or, you know, adjust our expectations. And, and so, well, I'm hoping that maybe with that particular project could come back to us in more detail at some point. And just to affirm to the rest of the council, yeah, I did ask for this presentation and. It was really the conjunction of the tsunami that we recently experienced. And because we're going into budget discussions next week, just kind of put this on our radar. Of, you know, projects that we may want to. Try to provide funding for or get a start on. Accomplishing at some point in the future, so. With that, thank you, Steve. And I think I will now move on to item four, which is additional materials.
Mayor Story, yes, we did have one additional material in support of item seven C.
Yeah, thank you, Chloe. Now we'll have, this is item five, which is oral communication by members of the public, this is an opportunity. For members of the public to speak on items that are either on the consent agenda or not on our agenda this evening. And Larry, were you going to? Put up the. Instructions?
Yes, I will, I will share that, thank you for reminding me. Do you see it?
So hopefully the. The attendees can see the instructions on how to. Participate in oral communications. Larry, do we have anyone who wishes to speak?
Mayor Story, I do not see any attendees with their hands raised and we have not received any emails. On this item.
Okay. Going, going, gone, I'm going to move us on then to the next item. Which is item six, which is staff and council comments, we'll start with staff comments first.
Staff doesn't have any comments this evening.
Okay, councilmembers, who would like to begin? I, I see, no, oh, there's a little hand, councilmember Brooks.
Thanks, Mayor Story, I just wanted to make a comment about the notice that was just posted. Some of our call, attendees call in, so they can't see the screen to know what to do. So I just wanted to make a note of that for that tricky. It wasn't too long ago that I said there's very long, that long message as well, so, but just FYI for the callers. That might be important to them to, because they can't see it, thank you.
Thank, no, thank you for raising that, obviously I had not considered that. But we'll go back to my prior practice of, of telling callers how they may participate. So, thank you for that. Councilmember Bertrand?
Thank you very much, Mayor. So I'd like to thank Kalash and Steve, the other day we did a walk on the. Upper parking lot driveway leading up to the corner. Park in Monterey and did some measurements and I was very encouraged that he could do a pathway up there without hurting the oak trees. I've heard some comments later that it might be a little more difficult. But when the council considers what to do there when it comes back to us. You know, I've walked past there so many times and I've been really. Impressed by the majesty of those oak trees. And when you think about, when did the oak trees first arrive there? Probably soon after the railroad bed was put in place. You know, these are natural occurring oaks, I don't know how they got there originally. Probably some squirrel buried an acorn somewhere or something of that sort. So, you know, this railroad bed's been around for over a hundred years, I believe. Probably asked us history society. To give us a little better idea, but those oaks, I'd be willing to bet are well over a hundred years, so when we consider in the future. What to do with this pathway. And I think safety is important, but how we execute. A pathway to be safe for people using the upper parking lot and going that route. Let's consider the oaks that have been there for, I believe, many, many years, thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Bertrand, any other councilmembers have comments? Seeing none, I'm going to move us to item seven, which is the consent agenda. These items will be handled with one vote unless a council member will choose to pull a particular item. Do any of the councilmembers wish to pull an item for further discussion? Councilmember Bertrand?
May I just make a comment about the minutes and I don't want it pulled, but I'd just like a clarification?
Sure, go ahead.
Thank you, so my comment in, in regards to the. Eight notes, excuse me, decoration, you know, when. RTC came here, I will, I was recommending to the council that we ask the. The committee that deals with art that you're on, that they would be tasked or. Asked if they have any ideas as far as our contribution. And I agree with the way the notes were represented and that would be public art. But in particular, I'd like the Arts Commission to be involved in that, so that was really what I was claiming or actually pushing, thanks.
Thank you for that. Any other comments on the consent items? With that, is there a motion?
I'll move the consent.
A second.
Second, okay, that's a motion by councilmember Bertrand, seconded by councilmember Peterson, Chloe, could we have a roll call vote?
Councilmember Bertrand?
I agree.
Councilmember Brooks?
Aye.
Councilmember Peterson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kaiser?
Aye.
Mayor Story?
Hi, the motion passes unanimously, which will bring us to general government, publicarians this evening. The first item eight A is a report on the scope and budget for the capital of Wharf resiliency and public access improvement. Phase two, the recommended action is to receive the report on funding status for phase two. Of the project and continue funding option discussions in the. City's budget. Goal-setting session, which is scheduled for March first, twenty twenty two. You're going to kick this off first, Steve?
I am, it's good to be back.
Right.
Yeah, share my screen here.
Welcome back.
Hopefully you can now see that screen. Great, so. We're here to talk about the Wharf project in phase two, which has not been completed. The scope of that project and the budget, but I want to just kind of talk about the reason we're here tonight. With the goal-setting session coming up next week. Is there's a lot of, I'm going to put a lot of numbers on the screen, I'm going to put a lot of. Components of the projects on the screen. And our goal is to try and through tonight, answer a lot of questions and then in the goal-setting session. To identify what the budget for the phase two scope is going to be. And what the scope of that project is going to be, they're tied together, the more we want to build toward our total project, the more money we're going to need as we move forward. But so I'm, I'm really hoping just to kind of make sure you guys understand it, we didn't want to include this at the. Goal-setting session because it is a lot of numbers besides what other budget issues you're going to have to look at next week, but. That's the purpose for us being here tonight, or this presentation, we're here for a lot of reasons, but. So some quick background, rehabilitation capital wharf, the beach flume and the jetty were key elements in the passage of measure F. Back in two thousand sixteen, the flume and jetty improvements are complete, they were completed in May of last year. And the first phase of the wharf project, which replaced the failing steel piles at the head of the wharf and. Make some structural repairs under the restaurant were completed this last December. Phase two of the project, which we need to build is ready to go to bid in construction right now. Determine what we're going to build, we anticipate the construction coming this fall and winter. The basic project, which includes widening the trestle section of the wharf. Doubling the width, doubling the number of piles, providing the resiliency we're after. And then completing other structural players, mainly replacing failed pilings that are existing there now. And other failed portions of the structure of the wharf is a four point two million dollar project. Additional components that we can undertake are the utility upgrades, that's moving the water line, electrical line. And sewage line up above the deck of the wharf so that it. They don't get damaged in the storms, I would say that's our most common damage. That we have on the wharf is the water line gets hit by a wave and breaks, or the sewer line gets hit by a wave and breaks. Those are things that our crew typically repairs, but it's very common, so moving up those would help. Redecking, because everybody knows how, goes out there, the, the deck boards, we replace them. Kind of on an as needed basis, they were last completely repaired in nineteen ninety-nine, I believe it was. So that most of them have exceeded their, their life and need be replaced. We've always talked about putting restrooms, two restroom locations have been identified as we went through the public hearing process on this project. One between the restaurant and the bait shop. And that would then allow the restaurant to open up the view looking west. Which would be a benefit to them and provide new restrooms, which are greatly needed out there. The other location that was identified for. Restroom was at the base of the wharf where it's wide now before it gets narrowed into the trestle, currently we bring in. Portable toilets in there during summertime to help address the crowds. I think there, there's a need, when we went through the planning and, you know, planning permitting process, we notified. All the neighborhoods around that area, we didn't get any feedback from them. I know, I think the county, the city tried to build restrooms there. Twenty-five years ago, there was not a lot of public support for it. But I think the need at this point outweighs any concerns that people have and they realize there's a need and if we make them. If we make them look all right, then I don't think it'll have the impact that people are thinking, anyway, so restrooms at those two ends and then the floating dock. It can always use improvements, it is, it gets a lot of wear and tear during the summer, the steel pilings there. Are frail, there's none broken at the moment, but that's just a matter of time, if we're out there. Doing this major renovation, it'd be good to redo the floating docks. And we also want to add a Davit arm over the ramp that goes up and down. So that we don't have to call vehicle out currently to raise and lower that, we have to call tow truck out there. So sixty thousand dollar item to add a Davit arm, which will allow. Now either boat, boat chopper, our own crews to raise that if a high swell came in, so that's something that we would like to do, but it's. It's not necessary at this time, something to be done at a later time. So now look at the funding for the phase two project. The existing funding. As we've budgeted over the years have been, we have two point two million dollars of measure F funding that's been allocated to. Just the wharf project, other measure F money went to the flume and the jetty. We have a one point nine million dollar state grant. And the American Rescue Plan, one point eight million dollars from that, were all allocated to the wharf project, giving us a total of five point nine million dollars. To date, we've. Expended or at least encumbered in the case of Moffett Nichols Engineering contract. Six hundred eighty-three thousand dollars for them in completing phase one of the wharf project was a four hundred eighty-five thousand dollar project. So we've expended one point one six seven million dollars, so our available funds today is slightly over four point seven million dollars. I circled X, that's kind of a key number as we move forward. This is a lot of, this is where I get into the numbers and the details and elements that are a little harder to follow, but I'll. Do my best to go through this, so these columns here. And the rows are kind of ranked by. Phases and elements that we need to include in the order that I think we should include them. So mobilization and permit compliance, those are two items we're going to pay kind of regardless of what we do, probably that price range. Mobilization is paying the contractor to bring in all his equipment, materials and everything. And also demobilize them as part of that, so that's kind of a fixed figure. Permit compliance, so I think you're where we have permits from like six regulatory agencies. They all have nuances of monitoring for. Whales and dolphins and seals in the area, making sure nothing gets dropped in the water. And so there's probably on the, there's two hundred thousand dollar estimated expense for that. In phase one, that cost is thirty thousand dollars, I think thirty-two thousand dollars, so. That was a one-month project, we estimate this project is a nine-month project, probably not a direct relation between those two, but. So that's where that money comes and we're going to spend it no matter what we do out there. So then come the two probably critical items, I mentioned before, the wharf expansion, two point six five million dollars. And the structure restoration, seven hundred twenty thousand dollars, so the minimum project. Over here in the. Second column from the right is for a little over four million dollars, just to get. You know, I think what we need today, obviously we have four point seven million, so we can afford that. Wharf utilities and reallocations, what I think is next important, it's highly recommended we include that. That adds five hundred thousand dollars to the project, so brings that the running total of four point six million. Then redecking, we can redeck, redeck in. Phases, if necessary to, to fund the project, the first part would be the existing trestle, it'd be nice. The wharf boards all kind of max, so we don't have two different styles of wharf boards out there. From the new trestle to the old trestle, we've got one wide portion now, probably needs to be redetted as one. Redecking from the trestle to the restaurants would be next and then redecking the head of the wharf would be the last item in those items. Then become the even more optional items, although they certainly have benefit to the public and. Are an important part of ultimately building out on the wharf for the two new restrooms. The three hundred twenty-five thousand dollars here we have for the restaurants is based on square footage and construction costs. We did take a design to the coastal commission, or not the coastal, the planning commission, when we had the project approved. Because the planning commission asked us to come back with some further design work on that, we still need to do that once we know that they're included in the project or not. So. We definitely feel we can build them for that cost, it may be possible. To save some money here, but for budgeting purposes, that's the number we've put here. And then the floating dock improvements, which I talked about earlier, probably the least important, but certainly something that we need to. To think about keeping the project for now. So the same chart, I kind of took out a couple of columns, this is just the running totals, we add the elements. I just wanted to make sure we understand, so right now we're at four point seven million dollars, we can do the base project, we can add the utility location. If we. As part of the budget sessions and, and workshops that we're going to hold on next year's spending, if we add. The measure F funds that are dedicated for twenty fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. We can bring in the first two parts of the decking. And to get from there to the finish line, we need about another one point one million dollars. So. I think that's the, the end of my report, I'd certainly be happy to answer any questions. The recommendations are to receive a report on the cost funding and scope of phase two project. And then continue this discussion to the goal city budget session next Tuesday, I believe it is, or yes, it is, on March first. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, thank you, Steve.
Yeah, thank you, Steve, uh council member Brooks.
Thank you, Mayor Story, Steve, um was there, did I miss it, was there a timeline that you were showing for the progress? Um to complete all of those different face this or to complete phase two?
So I I think I said in the beginning of the report that our goal is to try and take it out to bid for summer and begin construction this fall and winter.
And do you anticipate all of those things presented in phase two to be completed?
Yes. Well, to go out to bed, we need to understand what our budget is, right now we have four point seven million dollars. If before we go to bid, we need to identify which which other elements we want to include and have a budget for that, and then we'll.
Sure.
Plans and specs.
Okay, and then my final question is that is after phase two, is there a phase three?
If if we don't complete all the elements which I showed you tonight, um there would be a phase three. They're part of our permits, but um right now uh we don't anticipate a phase three, we haven't called it a phase three yet.
Okay, um and the reason I asked that part is because I didn't. I I didn't see anything mentioning like the pilings and how we're moving things to fiberglass if we ever addressed all of that, and so. I'm curious whether.
So the fiberglass piles are part of the trestle widening I mentioned in there and also the structural repairs. Those are all piling related and all put going to the fiberglass pile, yes.
Awesome, thanks, Steve.
Any other questions from council members? Uh council member Bertrand.
Was there initial discussion, we were talking about dealing with the buildings, uh maybe some renovations. Um there was some issues about. Um preferred uh building. Orientation or size, I you know, I can't remember all the discussion, I think one part of the discussion was. The uh performance deck on the. On the end of the wharf, maybe not being strong enough should be. Reinforced as something, I you know, I just can't remember all the discussions, probably been about two years. Um and there's another aspect was. Are we still putting in place at the top of the pilings um a way to raise the deck? That was part of our discussion when it first came up. And I haven't asked that recently, sorry.
So. I'll answer the first part first is the buildings, we initially, when we. Um start scoping out this project, we did include a building. Renovation, teardown, we kind of looked at all the options. Quickly identified that was uh if we're gonna build this with measure F funds, we quickly exceeded. Those uh those limits and and also a discussion as we start talking about sea level rise, if we're gonna. Invest millions of dollars and and new buildings out there, we probably want to raise the head of the wharf first. And then put new buildings on there, so that that was a discussion that's had. I think it was in two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen that we made a decision not to. Um re- include the buildings in this project at this time. Um so you know, we took them out and you know, we need to do maintenance on them. May come up as we move forward, but right now the buildings are not part of the project. And then as far as extending the piles, all the new piles that are going will be fiberglass piles. That are easy to uh extend, which will allow us, I think the 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 plan showed that the. Trestle would become a ramp up to a long gradual ramp up to a raised head. Um to raise the head will involve uh probably some new pilings, I don't think we can safely raise the. The wood piles that are under it now, but any new pile that will go in will be able to be raised, and then if we do raise the head, we'll be driving additional piles of attachment.
Okay, so it's still on the radar, thanks.
You know, the council members have questions? Um. Say none, um Steve, I wanted to ask about um. If we were made the decision to stage um these projects and. I was looking at, seems we have enough money to do the basic and the utility relocation. Um and. If we were to a- and maybe, and to me, doing the restrooms would be um. An important public benefit, but. Could we come back at a later time and do the redecking? Um and the floating dock improvements. Um components of the project. And would it cost more money because now we have a. Additional mobilization or uh and or permitting um expense?
So of course we can, we can build what we want, our permits are for the complete project at this time. So if we're gonna phase it out a little bit more, we would need to consult with the permitting agencies, there are probably some um. Timelines to our permits, I I can't quote them right now. But if we were to wait, say, three or four years, we would probably need to renew our permits and go through some kind of permitting process for that. Um as far as other costs, obviously the cost of construction goes up as we move, as we delay things. And and my only comment is um I think redecking the trestle is probably pretty important too, just because we're gonna have a new section next to the old section. And to make it look seamless, I think that would be a benefit, but um certainly we can build. Um what the council wants us to.
Okay, so so ideally you're recommending that we do the entire project at one time. Maybe without the floating dock.
Yeah, floating docks is something we can delay, I mean. I think we've had projects to replace those steel piles in the past, we replaced floating docks just kind of. On our maintenance effort, um we could put the the. Uh jet crane I talked about in on its own is a separate project, those are things that can be done separately. At a later date, or as maintenance needs require us to do them.
Yeah. Okay, um. I think at this time I'm going to uh take this out to the public, see if there's any members of the public that would like to comment on this item. Um and if you do, please raise your hand in the Zoom application or dial star nine on your phone if you wish to speak. Um and uh our moderator will allow you to speak. Um alternatively, you can send an email. Um and the email instructions are uh will be posted on. Your screen, and I guess for those of you that are on the phone only. You may send an email to publiccomment@ci dot capitola dot ca dot U S. So Larry, do we have anyone that wishes to comment on this item?
Mayor Story, I do not see anybody attending with their hands raised and. I do not have any emails on this item.
Okay, um with that, I'll bring it back uh. And and this is just a report for us to receive um and to continue this item. For further discussions that are budget sessions, which will be coming up um next week. Um. With that, we'll move on to item. A C, which is the computer network infrastructure upgrade and maintenance. Um the recommended action is to authorize the city manager to negotiate. An agreement with X C D O. And an amount not to exceed six thousand dollar per month for managed services of city I T network infrastructure. To approve the proposed resolution, amending the twenty-one, twenty-two budget. And direct staff to return to council for approval of the final agreement. Can we have a staff report, please?
Mayor Story, I I believe uh item eight B. Was ahead, but we could do H C now if you'd like, but Steve, I think had eight B. Um the um.
Oh.
The real.
Any order you want.
Whichever you'd like.
No, no, excuse me, I uh I skipped ahead, let's um. Uh let's put a pause on all that I just said, um and go back to item eight B. Which is to consider to consider a street resurfacing project agreement with the county of Santa Cruz. And there's a recommended action here is to approve a reimbursement agreement within the amount of four hundred twenty-six thousand. Six ninety-nine with the county of Santa Cruz for inclusion of Capitola Streets. In the county's twenty twenty-two pavement management project. And so, Steve, I I assume that this is your item.
One more item from you today.
Yeah.
So item before you um. Is obviously just an agreement with the county of Santa Cruz. Um to include our project streets in their project, in their uh street surfacing project. Uh quick background, the city just, I think last week completed phase one of our street real rehabilitation project on all this to streets that the council. Had approved for resurfacing. Um that working tail patching failed portions of the roadway so that when we apply a resurfacing to them. Um we'll have a a very good street. Phase two, which is the resurfacing, we we partnered with the county of Santa Cruz. Um to include our work in their project, it's all the same type of work that they're doing and uh obviously being. Small agency, better to be part of a large project, so county opened bids for their project on February third of this year. Um. Their low bid was just shy of three million dollars. And the count, city's portion was just shy of four hundred thousand dollars, so we're about thirteen point six percent of that project. An agreement has been drafted with the county uh. And reviewed by councils for both agencies. Uh legal councils, that is, um the agreement calls for the city to reimburse to the county. Uh the cost of the final work, uh the final work is based on the final quantities there um that's in the project. It uh sometimes, you know, obviously if we put in a few less tons or a few more tons of asphalt. Uh the quantities change and the prices change, the agreement does call for a. City to pay an eight percent overhead to the county. Uh they did the bulk of the lifting on the preparing the plans and specifications for the project. They're awarding the contract, they're managing the consultants or the contractor on it. We will do our own inspections of the actual work that's done in the city. But uh eight percent fee, hey, it's typical for the county and um I think it was a good deal. Uh we estimate that we saved seventy-five thousand to a hundred thousand dollars by partnering in the project on this. And that's a combination of getting much better bids on our pricing just because of the quantities are so much higher, and like I said, we um. Look internally, we have a difficult time putting plans and specs together. Uh we can do it and certainly do it, but they they uh they're much better at it. And so I think we uh it was worth our efforts to to do this partnership. So just to quick, everybody should probably know if you've seen your street dug up recently and patched, you're gonna get an overlay or a. Chip seal on it, so all these streets, all our portions of the streets are included Forty-second Avenue, Diamond Street, Ruby Court, Fanmar Way. Bay Avenue and Thirty-eighth Avenue. So the recommendation is to approve a reimbursement agreement in the amount of four hundred and twenty-six thousand, six hundred ninety-nine dollars with the. Santa Cruz County for inclusion of Capitol Streets in the county's twenty twenty-two pavement management project, that's my report.
Also member Bertrand.
Thank you, Mayor, um thank you, Steve, and Department of Public Works uh in putting this together. I appreciate the effort and you know, the savings to the city. Um so my question basically is, is how did this come about? What what sort of led to this cooperative agreement with the county? Uh maybe we've done it before, but you know, I can't recall, so this is great, um this is. This is wonderful, so if you could explain, I'd love to know.
Hey, just uh keeping open communications, we've done it before. Um. On story seals, like in I think last year or the year before, they had a sanitation project that replaced a lot of sewer lines in the jewel box. They came back and slowly sealed all the roads they worked on it, we added on to that to do all the streets in the jewel box, so sorry, so we've done this partnership with the county. Um before and it's worked well, this time we kind of got ahead of it rather than waiting for them and trying to add. Our work to their project. Um Kayla's made contact with uh their project engineer over there who was working on the project and we didn't know what their timing was. We had just approved, the council had just approved the list to works, uh streets to work on. And it turned out the timing, we were just to the right time at the right place and uh were able to include our work in their project.
Okay, are are you or Kalosh on a committee that, you know, you have an exchange of information and you could look for these opportunities? Or was this sort of word of mouth, or how did it happen?
Well, I mean regularly, probably monthly with their public works director of Matt over there. Um it's more of a luncheon to make sure we know what everybody's doing. Um and then we're we're in communication quite often with the county, there's no formal meetings that are held to coordinate projects like that, it's more of a. Just constant communication between the two agencies.
Okay, thank you very much, appreciate.
Any other questions from council members? It's Steve, I know uh Claire's is not um part of this contract with the county, but um what's the schedule for uh the Claire Street project?
Claire Street, which is a all-new pavement, it's not a resurfacing, that's why it's not part of this project. Um I would say we are ninety-five percent have the plans ready. Um we had a pavement uh section picked out, we ran into some concerns with that, we're having that reevaluated really quickly here. I anticipate we'll be bringing the plans and specs and getting authorization to bid uh within the next six weeks to the council.
Excellent, thank you, um. Uh with that, I'll take this item um out to the public um for any comments. Um if you'd like to make the comment, just raise your hand in the Zoom application or dial star nine on your telephone. Um and if you would like to send an email, um send it to public comments at ci dot cap- capitola. Dot C A dot U S, um the instructions are on the screen. Um for those of you that can see the screen, um. Larry, do you see any uh hands going up or?
Mayor Story, I do not see any hands raised to speak on this item, and we have not received any emails on the site.
Okay, um. Well, I'll bring this back for council for further deliberation uh and uh possible action. And and before we begin, I just want to congratulate Steve on this collaboration with the county of Santa Cruz. To um you know, uh save us uh funding. Which we could use for the war, but with that, is there a motion?
I move to accept the bid. Move forward.
Just to clarify, we're approving agreement.
I mean, approve, excuse me, I should read it more carefully, to approve the agreement, thank you very much, Steve.
I can second that.
There's a motion and a second, uh can we have a roll call vote?
Council member Bertrand.
I agree.
Council member Brooks.
Hi.
Council member Peterson.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Kaiser.
Hi.
Mayor Story.
Hi, the motion passes unanimously, uh thanks once again, Steve.
Thank you, next council.
Which will now bring us to the uh item I thought we were going to previously, uh I'm not going to restate it. Um and I'll just ask for a staff report.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Story, council members, let me share my screen. Um. It looks good to me, does it look good to everybody else? Okay.
It looks good, Larry.
Okay, so this is uh item before you said um for a um an agreement to really upgrade the. The city's computer infrastructure, just for kind of a over background, um computer networks is basically the backbone of. Our computer system, everything we do traverses it one way or the other. Um includes all these devices that I've listed, um switches, wireless, access point servers. Um one thing we have done over the last few years is we've migrated a lot of our work to the cloud. Um so there's been a lot less requirement for some things in the city, however, all of these things that we talked about are needed to get there. Um in addition, we do have a requirement down the police department to have of some some. Equipment and data and certain applications on site. Um our current infrastructure, although working fine, you know, um is either at the end of its life or pretty much at the nearing the life, we. Over the last few years, we've kind of made things work with, because we were hoping to get a kind of a larger plan, but due to, you know, funding, we wanted to wait. Um but at this point, we we kind of had no choice, we're at the point where we need to do a lot of our. Um, but at this point, we, we kind of had no choice. We're at, at the point where we need to do a lot of replacement. So um, staff went out, we, we spoke to three different vendors, highly qualified integrators that do this. We, we are recommending uh, a managed service proposal from Excedio. Um, this was the only proposal that includes installation, configuration, support as well as monitoring. Um, for the entire life of the contract. So they're going to be able to tell us, you know, when there, when there's problems ahead of time, when, you know, things don't look right. You know, and really importantly, they're gonna, they have folks that can monitor. You know, the bad players on the internet right now. We don't have that ability. It's very difficult for us. You know, we, we, we rely on software to do it, but sometimes software doesn't do it. You actually have to have eyes out there to kind of detect these things. Um, so this would include replacement of all these, this equipment, the firewalls, the switches. The cap, the police department servers as well as we, like I said, men- mentioned, we do have a lot of stuff on the cloud. They're going to be able to optimize it to make sure it works exactly how we wanted it to. And from a, a former IT person's perspective, um, increased redundancy and resiliency. I always say that the thing that keeps computer people up at night is loss of data. And we're, the, this proposal includes a lot of redundancies. So data's not just in one place, this is multiple places that if things go down on one, it can automatically switch over to the other. And, and it really will, will help us um. Make sure that the, the things we have today, we still have tomorrow. So um, one of the big. Uh, selling points is Excedio is based in Santa Cruz County. There aren't a lot of system integrators and, and um, folks that do this are based in the county. I have talked with multiple um, of their clients, um, some that we, 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 we work with quite a bit. They've all been extremely happy and they've all been folks I've talked to have been all long-term um, customers of Excedio. Because the proposal is actually based on the equipment installed. We understand that once they kind of get on board and, you know, they came in, did re- you know. Overlooked their environment, looked at what we had. We expect these numbers to change after they kind of are on site and say, okay, well, you know, we proposed. X, what we really actually need now based on some more information. We need X and Y or something, or maybe we don't need X, we can get rid of it. Um, so we do anticipate the, the final number to, to change. Um, we kind of think of this as more of a five-year lease, which includes the installation and configuration and all this other stuff as well. Um, this equipment after a number of years is, it has really no value because it's changed so much. So this actually works out well. So you know, you have a five-year lease and you know, at that time, you can move on to new equipment. You can re- redo everything you need to do, but we figure this is a, a reasonable time for this equipment. This is all within the lifespan of all this. Um. This will allow um, our incumbent information system specialist to kind of focus more on the desktop side. And the employee needs, you know, this, this does take a lot of time and, you know, you don't have the time you need to, to monitor all this backend stuff. Which their Excedio is going to help us do. Um. The cost of the agreement, we're anticipating it to be mainly paid for with salary savings. Um, our current, our current um, information system specialist has reduced her hours due to her choice. Um, and this will allow us to, she, as I mentioned, she can do the desktop, they can do the backend. And we will, we'll balance that out as well as we have a number of hardware purchases that we're going to be doing regardless, as well as license agreements that we can. Cancel and they'll be included in this contract. So you know, for the, for this year, um, we are looking for. The budget amendment, just to kind of cover this year, we're, when we go through budget, we're going to be able to get rid of some, some other long-term agreements and things like that, that we can build into this. So we'll, we don't anticipate the, the, the net cost to this to be that much after all these reductions. So after all that, the recommendation is to authorize the city managers to negotiate an agreement with Excedio. And not to exceed six hu- six thousand dollars per month for these managed services. And we, I get, the reason we put six thousand is to make sure we include, if we have to make some changes after they get in here. Um, we include that in there. Um, also item two, approve the proposed uh, budget uh, resolution, amending this year's budget. And direct staff to return to council with a consent item for the final approval of this agreement. And at that, I am available for any questions.
Yeah, go ahead, Councilmember Peterson.
Thank you, and forgive me, I'm um, pretty ignorant about the normal costs of IT network, infrastructure and all of this kind of stuff. So, but if I'm understanding correctly, the, the cost that we're looking at now, this twenty-five thousand is just through the end of fiscal year twenty-two. So that's only a couple of months, but then after that, we're looking at seventy-two thousand dollars a year.
That's correct.
Is that reasonable for this kind of?
It is, but it was, it was significantly lower than our other bids and yes, technology is incredibly expensive now.
Okay.
Um, and, and again, the, the, not, it wasn't necessarily the equipment that sold us on this. It's the ability to have them manage it as well, to, to be able to tell us when there's problems out there, when, you know, get us ahead of things. Where right now, sometimes we're on a reactive basis. So, but.
Okay, and you mentioned um, that this was essentially the same as a, a five-year lease of equipment and installation. So forgive me if I, if I missed this, but so are we looking at a five-year uh, contract?
That's correct, that's correct. And if we, if we get out early, um, it would be, we, we could pay it all upfront, which a lot of them are doing. But this is an ongoing basis and, and even during that five years, we anticipate changes to things based on the city's needs. And this will be included in there.
Okay, so if, if within these five years, our costs go up or it's not meeting our needs. Are we still on the hook for the seventy-two thousand dollars a year for the remainder of the five-year contract?
If, if, if we get out of it, yes, it'd be the same as us paying it upfront. And you know, even upfront, the, the cost of this is lower than the other options we had.
I see, okay.
To be clear though.
Yes.
We don't have the agreement yet.
No.
And so what this would be is authorization to go negotiate that agreement. So we anticipate it could be a five-year contract and we don't at this point have what the actual termination language would be. Is there a three-year deal, is it a seven-year deal? Um, we don't know those details yet, so those, those would come back to council in an actual contract. This is just kind of trying to get approval for the basic structure before we go and develop the contract with them.
Okay, makes sense. Thank you.
Councilmember Bertrand.
Uh, thank you very much, Mayor. Um, I'm sort of like councilperson Peterson. Not knowing too much about um, computer infrastructure and so I have some general questions. Uh, first question, we, we have an in-house person, so I'm just wondering what you expect in terms of. Um, getting service from Excedio, um, like from an individual person at a desk. That's my first question, or would that all be handled by our in-house person?
The idea, the, the idea would be the desktop and the users would be handled by our in-house person.
Okay, so.
And she would have the ability, if it's beyond that, to escalate it. Uh, but the, but the end user would not be calling Excedio directly.
Okay, got it. Um, so I, I was interested in when you said, um, part of the cost reduction is because. You're going to be reducing a lot of side agreements or, or whatever you want to characterize it with other entities. I was wondering if you could give us an idea what those agreements are, so we get an idea of how it was and now I guess what we're going to have.
Well, currently we pay, we pay for the hardware and, and um, uh, support for individual items. Say a firewall for um, uh, Microsoft three sixty-five cloud support, all of, we, we do it individually, kind of a siloed approach. Where in this, this organization, we, we pay to, to kind of manage the firewall if we need to. This organization, we do to manage Office three sixty-five. The, these things will, we won't be using these anymore. They'll be included in this, this agreement. Um, you know, some, some of the items we have, um, technical support from the manufacturer. Um, we won't be using that anymore. This will be included as part of the agreement.
Um, so this should streamline things for you.
We hope so, yes. It's kind of a one, a one place to go to for all this.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate.
Any other questions from council members? Um. See none, um, I, I, I had um, um, three questions, I believe. Um, one, I noticed that uh, Excedio's proposal says it's valid until February first, twenty twenty-two. Are we still?
Um, we're, we're still okay on that.
We're good with that, okay, um, as a basis for negotiating an agreement.
Yeah, we, I think that was the original one. We've been, we've been kind of talk, moving through this as well. Um, yeah, up till now. So yeah, that's just a legacy date. Sorry for that.
Good. Um, and um, will the negotiations include guaranteed response times if we need to have immediate attention?
We, we will talk about that for sure.
Well.
Yes, yeah, sure, what they call a service level agreement.
Yes, okay. Um, I mean, I find that to be very critical with um, IT services. Um, and it's really beneficial that, you know, they are local. Um, I mean, I think on many levels, I think that's um, beneficial. Um, and I think my final question was, um, at the end of the five-year lease, um, is there a buyout provision on the equipment? Um.
We, we would negotiate that. At this point, it, either, we, we didn't include that. Um, it's depending on the, this is kind of probably most likely a, a, a doll, uh, what they call it, end of a dollar amount at the end. Cause we fully paid for it, but after five years, we would be highly unlikely to want to keep the equipment. Because it is at, basically that's kind of the lifespan of all this, all, all of these things. In fact, you know, the, the, this, the manufacturers usually kind of phase things out where they, where they quit offering support after a while. And that's usually five to seven years.
Right. I think it's good to have that option though, so um. So with that, I think that concludes the questions on your presentation, Larry. I'll just maybe quickly go out uh. To uh, the public, see if there's any member of the public that wishes to comment on this item. Um, if you do, raise your hand in Zoom or you may dial star nine. Um, and the moderator will um, allow you to speak up to three minutes. Um, or if you prefer to send an email, you can send that to publiccomment@ci dot capitola dot C A dot U S.
So Mayor Story, I do not see anyone in the audience with their hands raised on this item. And let me just make sure, we have not received any emails on this item.
Okay, I'll bring this back then to the council for their uh, discussion and possible action to. Authorize the city manager to no- negotiate the agreement. Um, and to approve the proposed resolution and direct staff to return to council for approval of the final agreement. Is there a motion?
I'll move approval of the recommended action.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second. Um, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Bertrand.
I'm Bruce.
Councilmember Brooks.
Hi.
Councilmember Peterson.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Kaiser.
Hi.
Mayor Story.
Hi, the motion passes unanimously and which brings us to item eight D. Which is uh, the allocation of opioid settlement funding. The recommended action is to authorize the allocation of the city of Capitola's portion of opioid settlement funding. To the county of Santa Cruz for twenty-two, twenty-three. And authorize the city manager entered into an agreement with the county to establish a process of city participation. In defining priorities for the use of the settlement funds in the region. Jimmy, you gonna?
I am.
Lead us in this? Take, take it away.
To share my screen. How's that look, Larry?
Looks great.
Great. So Mayor, members of the council. As you are aware, there's been much press about uh, national litigation with different opioid manufacturers and distributors throughout the country. Um, there were several cases that were consolidated in federal court. Uh, that would have been brought by multiple states and uh, local jurisdictions against the parties. Uh, the parties at this point have agreed on a nationwide settlement. Um, in two different settlement agreements, one with distributors for various opioid products. And Jansen, which is also known as Johnson and Johnson. And on November twenty-third, at the end of last year, the city of Capitola uh, opted into those settlement agreements. And so we are now a party to this, those settlement agreements. Under the terms of the settlement agreements, the distributors would be paid twenty-one billion dollars and Jansen would pay up to five billion. The distributor's payments would be made over eighteen years and the Jansen settlement would be paid between seven and nine years. Of the total amount, two-point-six billion dollars would go to the state of California and cities and counties in the state. Uh, under the terms of the settlement agreement, Capitola would be eligible to receive about three-hundred-and-twenty-thousand dollars over the eighteen-year period. For about eighteen thousand dollars a year. And any given year, if the city doesn't elect to receive the funds, then the funds end up with the county. So we'd be with Santa Cruz County. Our staff was researching what the potential uses were for the funds. We quickly realized that these were uses that were often managed by the county in their social service programs. So we scheduled a meeting with um, the county department of behavioral health. And talked through um, the different kinds of uses for the settlement funds. And those include potentially matching funds for substance use disorder facilities, building new or expanding substance use to say, um. Disorder of fist treatment, infrastructure. Uh, addressing the needs of communities of color, vulnerable populations that have been impacted disproportionately by substance use disorder. Uh, preventing addiction in vulnerable youth and then dispensing Narcan. And so as I mentioned. Staff with the city as well as the other cities in the county scheduled a meeting to talk with the county's uh, behavioral health division. And in the course of the conversations, they indicated that their preference would be um, to let the funding remain with their department, uh, with the county. Um, all of the cities at this point are, at this point, I believe, uh, staff will be recommending this to the various city councils with the cities around this, around the county. Um, and as part of that proposal that the county made, they suggested in a regional agreement that we would all enter. Um, that would essentially establish a stakeholder committee that the county would staff. And would look to establish priorities for where the funding would go based on the allowed uses in the settlement agreement. Whatever the local priorities were and needs that were identified by the city stakeholders. Um, and it also allows Capitola's participation in that stakeholder group. Um, given the experience that the county has in implementing and overseeing substance use disorder programs. Um, in addition, the county has the ability to match these funds with federal funding that they can, they're eligible to receive. Um, Capitola residents would be eligible to receive services that would be offered through these programs by the county. And then the county would be responsible for the required reporting of the settlement agreement. And then the last point to keep in mind is, is that the city has the ability to opt out of, of, of this and receive the funding in any future year as well. So with that, um, a recommendation is to authorize the allocation, Capitola's allocation. Of the opioid settlement funding to go to Santa Cruz County. And then for this fiscal, that coming fiscal year. And then in addition, um, I have a minor recommendation change to the second piece here. And the addition is, is that um, the, the final agreement hasn't been signed by all parties yet. And so uh, my recommendation is to authorize the city manager to enter into uh, an agreement that's in substantially the same form as the attached agreement. With any changes made to it approved by the city attorney. And that's the agreement with the county to establish the process for participation in defining the priorities for the use of the settlement funds in the region. And with that, available for questions?
Questions from council members? There we go. Um, Councilmember Bertrand.
Um, thank you very much. Um, so the latter part of what you said. Um, senior manager had some interest in me and that is uh, the committee to establish um, priorities. And so my question to you is, um, based on your experience now and perhaps with the city. Um, police chief, are there priorities that we have here in the city of Capitola that you feel um, we should address? And that would be part of your discussion with the county committee? So I'll be honest with you, as I said before, I'm not a specialist in substance use disorder and substance use disorder needs. Uh, so I think a part of the participation in the committee would be a bit of a learning process. Uh, however. However, I would, you know, specific things that I would push for would be support for our police department in their local response to the extent that the county behavior, mental, county behavioral health could put in place programs that supported the local police department, specifically ours, that would be a focus, I think, that we would have.
So perhaps special training so that could be better able to deal with such problems as they seem, as they meet them.
Special training, additional support, those kinds of things, yes.
Okay, so another question. What would you think of the idea of receiving the funds directly so that our treasurer could deal with maybe getting the interest on them and dispersing them as needed?
So the recommendation is to enter the partnership with the county in this case. I think that the reasoning for that is, is that then we would become the custodians of these funds. And frankly, the the associated work with coming up to speed and developing the internal staff expertise would be a fair bit of work to be able to effectively disperse the funds. And then on top of that, there's the reporting requirements. That being said, if the council's wish is for us to go back and investigate that, we certainly, we could certainly take a look at that and look at how we would be able to allocate the funds consistent with the settlement agreements.
So what I was seeing about in terms of dispersing is, as the county informs us that it's needed, you you disperse the funds. You don't participate in the fund dispersment in any other way. Because I'm just proposing that, I'm just presuming perhaps that the the need for payments may not be all at once, which would be like when the funds are initially given, but over the year.
Yeah, Councilmember Chan, maybe we could deliberate on that when we bring this back.
Oh, I was trying to explain my question because it was taken a different way.
No, I, I, I think we understand what you're trying to get to. Was there anything you wanted to add to that, Jamie?
I think the only detail I would add is, is that would be, you know, if you do the math on that one or two percent of eighteen thousand dollars for a portion of the year is not a lot of money. If it obligates the city to become a reporting agency, has to report on the the uses back to the settlement authority. So there's a fair bit of work that comes with receiving the funds.
Okay, so it's the work, it's not worth it. Thanks.
Any other questions from council members on the item? Seeing none, I'm gonna go out to the public, see if there's any member of the public that would like to comment on this item. If so, you dial star nine on your phone, raise your hand in Zoom. Or you can send an email to publiccomments@ci.capitola.ca.us. You'll have up to three minutes to contribute. Larry, do we have anyone?
Mayor Story, I do not see any attendees with their hands raised and I do not see emails on this item.
Okay. So I'll bring this back to the council for further deliberation. And in any further consideration of Councilmember Bertrand's proposed modification and potential action. Any council, what, Councilmember Bertrand?
I, I like the idea of this committee to help prioritize. And is this something that's been done before within your own experience here in this county? And would it be a new thing? I'm just wondering how it would work. Is it something we should consider? If it comes back in some sort of way, you know, the con, you know, is the police chief's going to be on it, you're going to be on it. I mean, you know, the the composition, you know, I'm just trying to get a flavor for what you're proposing, that's all.
At this point, I think we are building the aircraft while flying it. You know, this agreement only came to fruition in the last couple of weeks. The concept was just floated a few weeks before that. So in terms of regional collaborations, that's pretty fast. So I don't think it's been resolved yet of who the best representative on the stakeholder group would be. I think it's very probable it could be someone in the police department. But I think at the outset, at least unless something changes, I would anticipate I would attend at least the first couple of meetings.
Okay. Would you anticipate reporting back to the city council since this sounds like a very interesting initiative and we would be very interested in how it's turning out?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve this initiative and move forward with the agreement with the the county and other cities in the county. Authorize the city manager to enter into an agreement in substantially the same form as attached agreement, which we will not read. And any changes approved by the city attorney, which we may find out later, with the county to establish a process for city participation and defining priorities for the use of settlement funds in the region. Thanks for putting that up, Larry, or maybe it's Jamie.
Yeah, thank you, Larry. Councilmember Brooks.
I, I would like to second that motion. I just want to make sure we have the full recommended action on the record for approval.
I think we do. I think we're okay because technically the city doesn't have to take any action to send the money to the county this year. We'd have to take affirmative action to actually claim it. So the key, the key is approving the agreement.
Councilmember Bertrand, would you be willing to read the recommended action? So I I'm more than happy to second to, I just want to make sure we have it for for clarity.
Larry, could you post that back up on the screen? There we go.
Yeah, this, this is what I just read, I thought. So while the first part, I have to admit, I didn't read. Authorize the allocation of Capitola's portion of the opioid settlement funding to Santa Cruz County for FY twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three and authorize city manager to enter into the agreement in substantially the same form as the attached agreement with any changes approved by the city attorney with the county to establish a process for city participation and defining priorities for the use of settlement funds in the region. Thank you, Councilperson Brooks, for capturing. I forgot to read the first part.
I got you, Councilmember Bertrand. I'll go ahead and second that.
We have a motion and a second. And before I cough or vote, I just wanna just really congratulate staff on bringing together another collaborative project, obviously on restricted funding that, you know, we don't have the staff and ability to comply with. And I think this is an excellent use in establishing the committee to, as Jamie said, build the plane as they fly. I think it's the best approach for, you know, community wide approach toward, you know, opioid and and addiction. So with that, so we have a roll call vote. Chloe?
Councilmember Bertrand.
I agree.
Councilmember Brooks.
Aye.
Councilmember Peterson.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kaiser.
Aye.
Mayor Story.
Aye. And the motion passes unanimously, which brings us to item nine, adjournment. So I want to really thank all the council members and thank the staff and our city attorney for the work we did here this evening and and all this, all the work that that you guys do on behalf of the community of Capitola. You know, it's very much appreciated and it's what makes Capitola a great place to live. So with that, I will adjourn this meeting until March the first at five PM for the council's budget session. Did I get that right, Larry? And and with that, and I'll sign off with be kind to yourself and to others. And thank you and good night.